Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to call the, to order the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education meeting to order. And we want to also, just for a minute, observe a moment of silence. We lost one of our students at Central Cabarrus High School on January the 23rd, I think it was, Connor Volz. And so if you will, join me in a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, now, we're going to have our opening ceremony, and I'd like to introduce to you the following Air Force ROTC cadets from the Mount Pleasant High School ROTC unit there. We have Cadet Master Sergeant Michael Driggers, Cadet Lieutenant Tim Vincent, Cadet Lieutenant Alicia Shepherd, Cadet Technical Sergeant Cody Lar, and these cadets are led by Lieutenant Colonel E. Clark and Chief Master Sergeant Kevin McLaughlin. Would you all stand with me, please?
And you all would be with the pledge of allegiance. Let the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, march. With that, fellas, order, march. Right, pace. Toward, march.
Okay, board members, we're going to move on to setting the agenda. You've had your agenda for several days now, and do I have a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Agenda as is. All right, now, we're going to move on into our recognitions portion here, and I'd like to recognize Lieutenant Colonel Thomas Clark to come to the podium, please.
Thank you. The award of the Gold Medal of Valor is a very rare occasion, and for circumstances under which this award is being presented, it is almost first. We have with us a cadet who has shown extraordinary courage under the worst of conditions, equaling those that our troops face on the battlefields of Iraq and Afghanistan. Cadet Allman, please, front and center.
If I may, I'd like to read a letter of recommendation from the Director of Air Force ROTC, Chris L. Wheeler. Says, "I approve the Gold Valor for Cadet Christopher Allman. His actions in dealing with a life-threatening situation were exemplary and unselfish. I am proud to have this fine cadet on our team. He emulates our core values of integrity first, service before self, and excellence in all we do. Please extend my sincere congratulations to Cadet Christopher Allman for his outstanding performance." Citation to accompany the award of the Air Force Gold Valor Award to Cadet Staff Sergeant Christopher L. Allman. On March the 5th, 2010, at approximately 18:30 hours, Cadet Chris Allman and his mom contacted the babysitter at their house via cellphone. During the conversation, which was on speakerphone, the Allmans heard a muffled bang and a cry for help. The Allmans rushed home and found Chris's brother, Michael, lying on the sidewalk and bleeding from injuries. The babysitter-turned-assailant was stumbling around the yard wielding a handgun. The assailant approached Chris, who was attempting to help his brother. The assailant began firing in Chris's direction. Chris made himself the focus of attention and drew fire while his mother ran to the neighbors for help. At some point, the assailant turned toward Chris, Chris's mom, and at that point, Chris charged and successfully disarmed and subdued her. Chris secured the area and called 911, while neighbors comforted the wounded victim and assisted with details until the police and medical help arrived. For this extraordinary act of courage requiring decisive and timely action without concern for personal safety, the United States Air Force is awarding the Air Force Gold Medal of Valor to Cadet Staff Sergeant Christopher L. Allman. The actions of Christopher Allman reflect great credit upon himself and the United States Air Force.
We'd also like to invite other members of the family to come forward for photographs, please. I also have a certificate that was presented to Chris. It is signed by the Commander of Air Force ROTC, Colonel Wheeler, Chris Wheeler, and it is an award certificate to accompany the pending of the medal. Chris.
It's not often that we get to recognize an event like that, and I'm real thankful for him and for the family and for the junior ROTC program. We want to continue on now with our recognitions, and I'd like to ask Ms. Ronnie Boone to come to the podium, and she's going to be doing the Impact Through Education Awards tonight, so listen up because she'll be calling your name out sometime shortly.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are honoring students and staff from Cox Mill Elementary and from J.M. Robinson High School this evening for the Impact Through Education Awards, and we're going to begin with Cox Mill Elementary School. So at this time, I'd like to invite any members of the administrative team from Cox Mill Elementary to please come forward to stand with your students and staff. Doesn't look like anyone's here this evening, so we'll go on and get started. Our first honoree from Cox Mill Elementary School this evening is Grace Keating. Would Grace and her family please come forward? Come right on up, sweetie. Stand on the line right up there. Everybody. Grace Keating is a third grader in Sharon Albright's class this year. Mrs. Albright describes Grace as a tender-hearted, conscientious student. She's friendly and supportive to all her peers and continually asks if there are ways that she can help. If Grace doesn't understand a concept the first time, she asks questions and continues to try until she has mastered the skill. Mrs. Cook, Grace's second grade teacher, said that Grace had such an impact on her class last year due to her kindness to others, her responsibility, and her respect. She always has a smile on her face and looks for ways to help others. Grace is one of those students who will be remembered for years to come due to her unselfish attitude and her compassion for others. Cox Mill Elementary School is proud to award Grace with the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Our next honoree from Cox Mill Elementary School is Ms. Rock Murphy. Would Ms. Rock and her family please come forward? Ms. Rock is a third grade student in Mrs. Ramsey's class this year. She has touched the lives of the families at Cox Mill by sharing some of her past. In second grade, Ms. Rock and her family worked with all the second grade classes to lead a fund drive to raise money to build a well in Ms. Rock's hometown in Africa. Mrs. Ramsey says that Ms. Rock's love of her family comes shining through each day with exuberance, optimism, and a love of learning. She's a positive role model to the students in her class. Her fellow students recognize Ms. Rock as someone special. They voted her as class president. Their reasons for electing her were her fairness, how good a friend she is, and how responsible and respectful she is. Ms. Rock pushes and inspires herself and others, as well as her teachers. She personifies the Cox Mill mission to inspire, to empower, to achieve. Congratulations, Ms. Rock, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Cox Mill Elementary School. Ms. Moore, you can come forward. Our next honoree from Cox Mill Elementary School is Doris Bridgers. Would Mrs. Bridgers and her family please come forward? They're not here. Okay. We'll go ahead and read her bio, just so that everyone can hear how special she is to your school. Mrs. Bridgers has served Cabarrus County Schools as well as Connapulus City Schools for the last 34 years. She has brought her love of learning and enthusiasm for life into the classroom and touched the lives of numerous people. Mrs. Bridgers had a true understanding of the teacher mission. She always sought to bring out the best in each of her students. Not only did she serve the education profession in the classroom, but she also served her fellow teachers by holding both local and state offices with the North Carolina Association of Educators. Mrs. Bridgers retired from the teaching profession in December. Her daily presence is truly missed at Cox Mill Elementary, but her impact on the classroom and the profession will be remembered for years to come. Thank you, Mrs. Bridgers, for making a true impact at Cox Mill Elementary School every day. So I'll give this to you to make sure she gets it. And our final honoree from Cox Mill Elementary School this evening is Ms. Elena Moore. Would Ms. Moore and her family please come forward? Elena Moore has served the Cox Mill community in various ways over the last several years, starting as a parent volunteer while her girls were students at Cox Mill. She then moved into the substitute teacher realm, where she touched every student in the school. This year, Mrs. Moore has taken on a new role with the Comets. She assists in the media center and is the communication guru. Mrs. Moore is the voice of Cox Mill. You cannot enter the school in the morning without hearing Mrs. Moore's cheers for the day on the morning announcements. She sends us off each day in style by saying, "Load those buses." Mrs. Moore's spirit rings throughout the school as she greets each child, staff member, and visitor throughout the day. Elena Moore has touched the lives of each person who has come through Cox Mill. Congratulations, Mrs. Moore, and thank you for making an impact on education at Cox Mill Elementary. Next, we will honor the students and staff at J.M. Robinson High School. I'd like to invite any members of the J.M. Robinson Administrative Team to please come forward. Our first honoree from J.M. Robinson this evening is Lydia Sorrell. Would Lydia and her family please come forward? Lydia Sorrell is a senior at J.M. Robinson High School. She's currently one of the school's highest-ranking seniors and has a stellar grade-point average. Lydia is a wonderful example to her classmates and an inspiration to the adults fortunate enough to work with her. Lydia was also one of three students chosen to represent J.M. Robinson in the Morehead-Cain Scholarship Competition for the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. She is a member of the Beta Club, Committed Young Christians Club, and Juniorettes. She's been an integral part of the pride of Robinson for the past four years, participating in jazz band, concert band, and as a drum major. Among her many school club activities, Lydia is most importantly, a student leader. She spends part of her school day at Robinson tutoring students in chemistry, math, and Spanish. It is often said that good things come in small packages, and nothing could be more true of Lydia. Her kind ways and ability to relate to all students make her the perfect peer and such an asset to the school's student body. She is the epitome of the term servant leader. J.M. Robinson High School is proud to award Lydia with an Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Our next honoree from J.M. Robinson High School is Vishal Ruparalia. Would Vishal and his family please come forward? Vishal is a senior at J.M. Robinson High School. He plans to attend a four-year university, majoring in engineering or pre-med. He has already been accepted to the University of Alabama, the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, and North Carolina State University. He also plans to apply to Yale and Penn State. Lori McDaniels, guidance counselor, describes Vishal as charismatic, bright, and a dynamic teacher. His willingness to help others is just one of the many reasons he has been nominated for this award. He has served as a peer tutor in school and out of school his entire high school career. He is able to explain lessons on a student level. Vishal has been a member of the swim team for all four years and a member of the Beta Club his junior and senior years, serving as vice president of the Beta Club this year. He has also been an active member of the Key Club since his sophomore year, serving as vice president this year. In addition to these clubs, he's also participated in the school's ping-pong club. Outside of school, he likes to play guitar, write applications for iTouch and iPhones, work with computers, and is savvy enough to help teachers when needed. I don't write these. Another favorite pastime of Vishal's is eating, seriously. His friends describe him as being funny, caring, serious about school, a good listener, one to give good advice, and able to make people smile. Not only does he excel in academics by making honor roll every semester, but he excels outside the classroom with his great personality, helpfulness, patience, and enjoyment in helping others. It is J.M. Robinson High School's honor to present Vishal with the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations. Our next honoree from J.M. Robinson High School is Mr. Darren Hartzell. Would Mr. Hartzell and his family please come forward? J.M. Robinson High School is proud to recognize Mr. Darren Hartzell as an Impact Through Education Award recipient. Mr. Hartzell is a product of Cabarrus County Schools and a graduate of Central Cabarrus High School. He has been teaching masonry at J.M. Robinson High School since starting the program in 2005, following an extensive career in the masonry industry. He also helped to start the masonry program at Cox Mill High School during its opening year in 2009. The North Carolina Home Builders Association recently named Mr. Hartzell the 2011 Construction Trades Teacher of the Year. Mr. Hartzell's students have been involved in many service learning projects such as building foundations for Habitat for Humanity Houses in Concord and a historical cabin restoration in Harrisburg. They've also built a sign for the town of Harrisburg, as well as building seating, restroom, and press box facilities at J.M. Robinson's baseball and softball fields. Mr. Hartzell has also worked extensively with beautification projects on the school campus. He takes pride in the school and strives consistently to improve it. Mr. Hartzell is always looking for ways that he can better serve his students. He takes a personal interest in their well-being and builds lasting relationships. His students say, "Mr. Hartzell has high expectations for us, but he really cares about us as people." Mr. Hartzell also steps in to assist the school in any way that he can, even without being asked to do so. He is a team player and an asset to the school. It is with great pleasure that we recognize Mr. Darren Hartzell as an Impact Through Education Award recipient for J.M. Robinson High School. And our final honoree from J.M. Robinson High School this evening is Ms. Lee Richardson. Would Mrs. Richardson and her family please come forward? Mrs. Richardson has been employed by Cabarrus County Schools since 2005. She began her career with the school system as the data manager at Weddington Hills Elementary School, where she worked until 2010. In the summer of 2010, Mrs. Richardson became the NCY's data manager at J.M. Robinson. Due to the difference in elementary and high school, it was quite a change for Mrs. Richardson. She gladly accepted the challenge and dove right into her role at the school, and she has done an excellent job. The role of NCY's data manager is very demanding. Mrs. Richardson always completes her task in a timely manner and is willing to do what is needed to get her work completed to the highest standard possible. Even though her job is demanding, she always deals with school staff and students in a professional manner. Her coworkers say that she consistently displays a positive upbeat attitude and a friendly demeanor, no matter how stressful the situation. Her tireless efforts do not go unnoticed by the staff. Even though much of her work is behind the scenes, she makes a positive impact at J.M. Robinson High School every day. It is with great pleasure that we recognize Mrs. Richardson for making an impact through education at J.M. Robinson High School. Congratulations.
Okay, once again, thank you to all those that was recognized for your hard work and all that you've put forward there. Another recognition that we have here will be done by Dr. Barry Shepard, our superintendent, and also Mr. Cobb, who will be recognizing the Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month.
We paused this evening to honor the individual selected as our Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month. And as always, I'd like to invite a representative, Mr. David Cobb, the Business Development Manager of Hilbush Ford. There he is. And our generous sponsor of this award to join me here in front. On behalf of the Cabarrus County Schools, we're grateful for the support and recognition that Hilbush Ford provides for our outstanding teachers, and so thank you for being a wonderful partner. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that the Cabarrus County Schools' Hilbush Ford Teacher of the Month for February is Patricia Chapin. Ms. Chapin, would you and your family members please come forward? And members of the school administration, too, please.
Ms. Chapin is a fourth-grade teacher at AT Allen Elementary School, and she was nominated for this month's award by a parent who wrote the following: "Patricia Chapin is a valuable asset to Cabarrus County Schools. She works hard to bring students to grade level and always maintains a positive attitude with the parents and children she serves. Ms. Chapin has a servant's heart in her approach to relaying information to students and fostering a desire in them to grow through learning. My fourth grader has enjoyed having Ms. Chapin as a teacher and is excited about going to school. Thank you, Ms. Chapin, for inspiring children simply for the love of learning." On behalf of the Cabarrus County Schools, thank you for your outstanding work that you're doing for students. Mr. Cobb has something that he's presenting to you there. Thank you so much.
Shake our board members' hands, please. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Flowers for the teachers. Thank you again. Take care, David.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, moving right along for our last and final recognition tonight, Dr. Shepherd is going to be making a presentation from the North Carolina School Board Academy. Dr. Shepherd?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Each year, the North Carolina School Board Association's Academy for School Boardsmanship recognizes school board members for their cumulative training hours while serving as board members. Each academy year runs from July 1 through June 30. Board members must earn 30 hours of training annually, as approved by the local board and reviewed by the North Carolina School Board Association. Certificates for this achievement were placed at your seats tonight, board members, as you arrived, and tonight, I'd like to recognize the following board members for their accomplishments. For certificate of advanced achievement, we have two board members, Ms. Carolyn Carpenter and Ms. Cindy Furtinball. Now, to get that award, you have to have accumulated between 201 and 300 hours of training. So, very well done. Good work. Certificate of achievement to Mr. Lynn Schu. And to receive that award, you have to accumulate over 101 hours to 200 hours. And then, for certificate of merit, we have two board members, Mr. Tim Fur and Mr. Blake Keiger. And to receive that award, you accumulate between 31 and 100 hours of service. Thank you for your dedication to our students and for your continued support in learning how we can work together to serve the children of Cabarrus County. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the portion of our recognition. Those of you that have been recognized and received your award and everything, if you would like to leave the meeting at this point, feel free to do that through the door that you came in. And if you want to stay for the remaining of the meeting, feel welcome, remaining of the meeting, feel welcome to do so, because we're going to move right along with the meeting at this time. So, if you need to leave, feel free to do so. Okay, board members, we need to look at 5.0, the approval of the minutes, and has everybody had a chance to review the minutes for January the 9th and January 23rd meetings?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
I have a motion that we approve the meetings as presented. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Okay, motion carries. All right, now, we're going to move on into our reports section, and we have comments from the board chair. I have no comments this evening. I think Dr. Shepherd has comments, and he wants to do those at this time.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Just a few items I'd like to highlight this evening. February is a busy month for us. We're observing Black History Month to recognize the contributions and accomplishments of African-Americans. We're also celebrating National School Counseling Week last week. I want to thank our school counselors for the important role they play in our students' lives every day. And finally, this week is National School Bus Driver Appreciation Week. Cabarrus County Schools salutes the men and women who transport our students to and from school safely each day. Also, our district has much to celebrate. Congratulations, and she just left, to Ms. Hilda Batts, who is principal of AT Allen Elementary School and Cabarrus County's Principal of the Year. Ms. Batts has most recently been named a regional finalist for the North Carolina Principal of the Year. A selection team will be visiting AT Allen later this month, and Ms. Batts will be attending an awards ceremony this spring, while she will be recognized at that point. Also, congratulations to J.N. Freese Magnet School. The school received a $25,000 grant from pharmaceutical giant GlaxoSmithKline's Ribbon of Hope Program. In collaboration with Cabarrus County 4H2, 250 JM Freese STEM students will receive hands-on learning opportunities. Also, I'm thrilled to report that we have nearly, we have received nearly 800 applications from students for admissions into our STEM and International Studies Program for the 2012-2013 school year. The application window closed last week, so our Student Services Department is now beginning to process these applications, and I just want to say thank you to our students and parents for their continued interest in these programs. And I want to share that we will soon be introducing a new online process for requesting cumulative records and transcripts. The new process is an effective way to accommodate the growing needs for student transcripts to be available for employment background checks, college enrollment, and continuing education. So, check out our website in the coming weeks for more information. And finally, looking ahead, I want to remind our viewing audience that we will be holding our annual Budget Public Hearing here in the Education Center on March 5 at 6 o'clock. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd, for all those fine reports there. Now, we're going to move on into 7.0 of our guest speaker section, and for those of you that are here and for the viewing audience, I want to read this. Guest speakers may be scheduled on the agenda of the board's business meeting by calling the board clerk by 12 o'clock noon on the Friday prior to the meeting. Individuals addressing the board will be allowed up to three minutes, and groups will be allowed up to five minutes to make their presentations. The Board of Education would like to thank our guests for their interest in addressing the board and also for their cooperation in presenting information within the timeframe allotted. At this time, we have five speakers scheduled to speak tonight, and the first one up is Pastor Roland Jordan. If you're here, please come to the podium.
Good evening, Dr. Shepherd and the school board, and as well as the attorney, and as well as the residents here of Cabarrus County and other places. I've come with you some things that I got a vision and hope that you would take part in it, but it seemed like I had to go over and over again about the Dr. King. I see none of y'all faces on none of the events, and so maybe this time, y'all will take heed to it. And maybe we need some more blacks on the board, too, and I pushed to get somebody to run, you know, qualified. But like Dr. Shepherd said, black history, I'm glad y'all recognize that. But God gave me ideas. I have a white history, as well as Mexican and Spanish, and I'm working on that, so be in prayer for it. And I just come to tell you that the schools, y'all have authorization for any events that's going on on the school, like a game or anything, when the police involved. If a student hadn't made no misdemeanor or felony, I think y'all should be able to handle it. And if they do, y'all should be able to make arrangements that you can handle without them getting suspended, just depending what the situation is. However, you're in your laws, but some take them to court, and some have to stay in jail because the parents don't have the money to get out of it. So, I wish y'all check that out. Okay, another thing, kids wearing their pants hanging down below their waist, it's very disrespectful. And some of the elementary schools got kids coming to school with pajamas. I know, that ain't good. Wipe pajamas at home. And I want you to recommend kids to be in the bed at 9 o'clock. You know, I see a lot of them out in the street at 10:00. They need their rest. And cheerleaders, we need more black cheerleaders, Spanish. I think I seen one Spanish at a El Brown High School game. And try to keep the kids safe and to help them if they need. Some might be slow. I know I was slow in school, but I prayed to my Lord, and my Lord gave me wisdom. But we got teachers that can help, so we ask y'all to pay attention. Let's try to keep all our kids in school that didn't get a good education. Keep the prison from being overcrowded. And let's try to support a man and woman being married in a relationship that's coming up, that's bad for our kids, having gay people being married and stuff like that. But I do say that the gay people should be recognized, just like blacks and whites, because they're human people, they're God people, praise God. And I'm working on that, too, because we all are equal. And I'm looking for more black teachers and Spanish to help our kids, because they're not good with y'all culture sometimes, and work on your own with help. And I stand here tonight to represent the churches, to represent civil rights, and to represent my people, and to represent all people. God bless you and have a smile upon you, give you peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Jordan. Thank you, Pastor Jordan.
I would like for somebody to get in contact with me and I get to address these rattles, if you don't mind. I have asked in the past, no response, if somebody would do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Jordan. Okay, our next speaker is scheduled, is Michael LaCenti. Michael, if you're here, come on to the podium, please. And be mindful of the three-minute time. You'll see a little clock to your left there. When you start talking, it goes green, and when you get 20 seconds from the end, it'll get cautioned, and then gets someone read.
No problem. I'm pretty much sweetened to the point, or shortened to the point. I'm here just to speak out about that splash program. No, from everybody I've ever talked to, no. Remember, no. We don't need it. We need to learn English first. We need to master English, we need to master math, reading, writing, science, American history, and that's really much all I've got to say. And just remember, no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. LaCenti. All right, our next speaker is Catherine LaCenti, if you're here, and I'll ask the board clerk to reset the clock, please.
Hello, I'm here for the same reason as my husband, to say no to the splash. I just learned about this last week, and I've been looking into it a little bit, and it sounded good at first, but then I really got thinking about it, and in this, they were talking about how it takes longer than six years for the Spanish folks to learn English. Well, if you reverse that and you're thinking about us learning Spanish, it's going to take us a lot normal, a lot normal, the six years, because the Spanish are around it every day. They hear it from me, from you, they're around it every day, so it's going to take them less time to learn this. And I think that this is going to take away from the basics. I mean, there was a study just a couple weeks ago that high school students didn't know who the vice president was. I mean, that, to me, tells volumes on the histories, teaching history and English. I just feel like you need to stay with the core, and we should be teaching Spanish, or if, I know you say it's a choice for us if we want to put our kids in Spanish in kindergarten, but I know, and I bet a lot of people here know how the government is, it's going to be a choice right now, and then they're going to mandate it if it works, and I just, I don't believe in that. So, that's all I have to say, and I say no to the splash. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaCenti. Our next scheduled speaker is Denver Walker, and Mr. Walker, if you're here, please come to the podium.
I'm here about the splash program also, and I think I gave you guys a handout. I'm not opposed to our kids learning a foreign language. We should, and, but we need to teach foreign languages in our educational process, but we should do it as, let me get back. I'm not opposed to our children learning a foreign language. We need to teach foreign languages in our educational system. As you know, most of the other countries around the world teach English as a second language, and we should be teaching some of the languages of our competitors in the world, like the Chinese, the Russians, and what have you, because we are engaged in a world economy. And Mr. Van Hooklum, I guess, I can't pronounce it right, stated in the Tribune that this program's only been around for about five years. Well, I found evidence on the internet that it's been around since about '87. And my question to the board is, who is pushing this program and why, particularly considering the county is within, this year, we're looking at a $17.6 million shortfall for 2012? And you want to take on this program? I say nuts to that. And according to the Tribune article, Mr. Schu stated he thinks the program is a great program, that in times, Spanish may be the primary language of this country. I would like to state, we have been an English-speaking nation for 240-plus years, and I find this type of thinking being progressive and totally un-American. I would further state that English is the language of this country and the business as a work, business world as a whole. We cannot operate our educational system on the premise that Spanish will become the primary language of this country. It's our responsibility as citizens to ensure that such predictions do not materialize. And the Spanish-speaking people who migrated, migrated, or immigrated, whatever term you want to use, legally to this country have an obligation to immerse themselves in learning English, our customs, and our history, and then applying for citizenship. And just like all the folks that came through Ellis Island, in your agenda, you state that the VIF International Education supports this program throughout the complete inflammation process over a six-year period. Who are they and who's funding them? With this program, you're proposing to bring in a visiting international faculty teacher for this program. Why? We have plenty of English as second language teachers available, and according to your agenda printout, you are proposing to pay $57,000 a year, not including benefits paid by the VIF for this teacher. That's outrageous. A lot of teachers with master degrees would love to be earning a salary like that. I know several. You state additional resources can be used to support the teachers and the cost of the programs over time. Where do you propose to get the additional funds if this program goes forward? Are you proposing taxing us more to satisfy your agenda? In the agenda, you say this program would immerse, promote, achieve academic achievement and enrichment rather than remediation. That being said, I would ask why we have not been promoting the objectives all along in our educational process? Well, I started a new program to promote something that the school system should have been doing all along. I've had two people come through my shop that cannot make out a check that have graduated from high school. The way it looks to me, we're not getting what we're paying for with our hard-earned tax dollars, and presently, our country spends more per pupil than most other countries of the world, and we lag behind in math, science, reading, and so forth, as we all know. Therefore, I'd ask you to turn down the splash program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker, for your three-minute piece there. We also have Mr. Joseph, David Joseph Hall Jr., if he's here, please come to the podium, please.
Good evening, board. Thank you for taking time to hear from me tonight. I am a resident of Harrisburg, and I live next to Harrisburg Elementary School. I have sent an email to Ms. Monroe and asked her to copy it to every member of the board. I'm here tonight because of the NC DOT Rail Division hay dock to junker proposal. I am afraid that this proposal will basically kill the town of Harrisburg, make traffic, travel for school buses dangerous, trying to get from one side of the rail to the other side. What I have seen is the proposal, the proposal shows a two-lane bridge to carry all of the traffic that currently travels on Robinson Church Road and Hickory Ridge Road. They are going to connect that traffic to the traffic that is going to be on Roberta Road. The proposal is to extend Roberta Road all the way to Stallings Road and then have a bridge in that extension over the tracks. It sounds good, it looks good, and it certainly is better than having the buses cross the tracks. However, they are talking about putting two lanes on that bridge. I have asked the board to look at my I have asked the board to look at my email and consider supporting the proposal that I have as a test. I think if we close Hickory Ridge Road and force all the traffic that currently crosses Hickory Ridge and Robinson Church, across Robinson Church Road only, we will get a very clear idea how negative this proposal is going to be. And I don't know how this is done, but hopefully you all can take it under consideration and vote to support the test that I have proposed. I also have sent to Mr. Kligger some separate emails because he is my neighbor, and I'd like to put him on the spot. I think it's going to be difficult for us to be segregated into two communities, North Harrisburg, South Harrisburg. I think that's a terrible issue. And I believe that NCDOT has already provided the Education Board with information about this proposal, but I don't know if that information was clear. But it is clear to me that this proposal is going to make it virtually impossible for the school buses to cross the railroad tracks. Ten seconds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. You did an excellent job there, keeping it within the timeframe. Okay, Board members, that moves on now to nine point, no, I'm sorry, eight point, the approval of the consent agenda. If you remember, we had all of these items on the consent agenda from last week's public work session. And does anybody have any questions or comments? Or do I have a motion that we move on with the consent agenda? I have a motion. Do I have a second for the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Board clerk, the motion carries. Okay, now we're going to move on to the action agenda, which this will be the section I think a lot of you are here for. This will be the splash immersion program. I asked Mr. Jason Van Hukelum to come to the podium, and he's there. He's waiting on me, so we're ready to roll.
All right. Mr. Schu, members of the board, last week, we brought a proposal to begin a Spanish-language immersion program at Carley Fur Elementary. Before I open it up for questions, I did want to respond to Ms. Carpenter's question from last week as to the number of schools in North Carolina. And I have that data here for you, ninety-five. There are ninety-five immersion schools in North Carolina. Not all of them are with the splash VIF program. And then you also asked how many new splash programs were coming on board in two thousand and twelve with the VIF program? And the answer to that is ten. So it'll be ten additional schools that will be coming on board with the VIF program next year.
Now, are they all within? How many districts does that include?
I do not have that particular piece of data. I just know there's ninety-five schools that have that.
Okay, but I mean, you said splash programs, though, is it for districts, though? I mean, because if you noticed on the material you gave us, it was only seven districts. But some of those districts maybe had
Multiple schools.
Three, you know, for instance, it was eleven schools. But some of those, seven districts, but some of them maybe had three schools per district. And when you said ten new splash programs, it could have been maybe only two districts that had those.
That is correct. And I don't have, I don't have the distinction whether that is ten new schools or ten districts.
Okay.
I can get that for you.
Okay, Jason, are you finished up with your part?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Before we get started with the deliberations from the board, and we're going to start on Ms. Minnet's side here just in a few minutes. But I wanted to make a statement myself, since our well and most capable reporter does an excellent job for the Independent Tribune, made a statement that I recorded a statement that I made, and I want to speak to that just for a minute. And that statement, as Mr. Walker had mentioned just a minute ago, about me making a statement that someday, Spanish might be the primary language in this country. Now, there's more to it than just that. I want all of us to think about something here. Not that I'm saying yes or no toward this program tonight, but I want you to think about something. When, and all of us that's here tonight, every one of us is an immigrant. We came here from somewhere. I'm German descent. My wife is Scotch-Irish. Superintendent, I think he's Scotch-Irish. And you've seen tonight from all of the recipients of the awards what we're dealing with in our society today. Now, you think back five hundred years ago when Christopher Columbus came here and he discovered this America, as it was called then. What did he find here when he came here? He didn't find English. He found American natives. They had various languages between the tribes. What happened to the American Indian language? What happened to it? A lot of it's still here, but English has prevailed. And since this happened, you know, we talked about this last Monday night. I did a little research myself. And come to find out, and some of you historians might correct me if I'm wrong, and I stand to be corrected, but there is nowhere that I have found that these United States have never accepted the English language as its official language. Now, I don't know how many of you knew that, but I didn't know it. But I did find that out. It has never been accepted as the official language of this country. So keeping that in mind, you know, we live in a country that's very diverse. We've got immigration coming from everywhere. But that is not my job. And you hear that a lot of times. That comes from Washington. That comes from the people that make the laws that allows people to come here, that says they can come and says they can't come. I don't do that. I'm just a school board member trying to do the best I can. And so when we look at this splash immersion program, I see the pros and cons. I see the opportunities that it offers early children in a younger age. They can learn Spanish and learn English early on. And I think it's a good program, but I've got concerns. And I'm going to speak to those concerns after the board members have spoken to their issues and their concerns. And so now we're going to move on with the discussion. And I'd like to remind the board that before you speak a second time, please allow the other board members that haven't spoken at all speak first before you move on a second speak. So I'd like to start with Ms. Minnet, and the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an interesting proposal that's being put in front of us. And anytime we have something totally new like that with a lot of research to read, which I must confess, I did not read word for word. There's two hundred and eighty pages or something of the studies on this, on this program. But I do like to look at the pluses and the minuses. And some of those pluses come from individuals who contacted us, as do some of the minuses. And some of them come from my own experience or perhaps from my experience with people who have dealt with English as a second language. Some of the pluses that I see to this program, which I think we're not completely understood by many people, is that this is a voluntary program.
Yes, ma'am.
It is not something where a child is going to be selected and put into that class unless their parents want them there. And we have had people contact us who say, I would love for my child to have that opportunity. One individual I know said that he had even thought of trying to get a position overseas so that his children could have the experience of going to another country and learning another language. And they felt it was a positive. So that is one of the positives. I do also know and have personal knowledge of families with small children, friends of mine, whose children went to France or Mexico as young children. And they were totally bilingual by the time they were six years old because they were in those two cultures. That can't be a bad thing. That can only be a good thing later in life. And the world is changing. We travel much more rapidly, and our businesses and our jobs take us all over. So that's a positive for these children later in life to have that leg up. One of the things I think we forget as Americans is that the English is an international language. And it's very seldom that you travel to any country in this, in the world, that you can't find somebody who speaks your language. So you're, you know, you're very seldom just totally at a loss. So those are the positives that I see to having this program in the schools. The negatives that were brought forward to us and that I also have concerns about. I know intimately one of our ESL teachers who has been here for many years and has been referred just this evening by one of the staff as an excellent, excellent teacher in ESL. And she is from Romania, teaches, I mean, speaks five languages fluently. And she told me one time that we are not, we're doing a disservice to the Spanish-speaking people in this country by making it easy for them to operate without learning English. And I mean by that, when the post office and the Walmart and the things have it there in the dual language. She feels that that's a crutch that people rely upon. And I see her point of view there. I think sink or swim is often a good method to have to learn something difficult. It gives you an incentive to learn. One of the other ones, though, is the cost. This is an additional cost. It was not in our budget. And it comes from the disadvantaged budget. And I'm sure there are other things that that fifty thousand dollars could do for the disadvantaged students in our system that might be more beneficial than doing the language piece. You know, maybe just basic reading or basic math, some of the more basic things that these disadvantaged youngsters, youngsters need help with. Just want to point out two misconceptions that people have. One of the letters we received said that they could do the Spanish in the STEM program. I didn't quite get that because the STEM program has nothing to do with language. It's science and technology. So I just wanted to mention that to the public, that that's not language-oriented. And another one said something about the commission was wanting to or considering raising property taxes. I think that is a misconception as well. They're talking about raising the rate, not the tax, so that your tax would be the same amount. So we need to help the public fully understand these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minnet. Ms. Carpenter, you can go right ahead.
Okay, I've tried to write down all my stuff, so hopefully I've got it all written down. First of all, this, this is a new program, and there is a cost. And you, and on one sheet, I'm seeing fifty thousand. But then originally, when we talked about it, I saw fifty-seven thousand. So it is a new program. And one of my first concerns was when I first got the information that there was only seven counties that were doing the program. And again, question of when we had the first time, it said it was five years that the program had been in operation. And then we had the gentleman, Mr. Walker, had given us saying it was in operation since nineteen eighty-seven. So there's some question there. And one of the concerns I had, if you look at the counties that we had been given the information on, most of those counties were all smaller counties, not counties of our size. And, and that was, that was a concern of mine also, having that because of the counties that we're looking at. If we, and then too, if we had, using this money, this was another thing that Ms. Minnet had brought up. We have, there's three of the members that are sitting on this board that we serve on the Budget Committee. I really felt that this should have come to the Budget Committee first because it's new, you know, you're asking for new money. And that's what we do. And I'm sitting here looking at a list, and we asked our Budget Committee members to say, if you wanted something new, you had to find something from last year and find the money for it. And, and one of the things, for instance, that came up and through the Budget Committees, two tech facilitators were taken out last year. It cost a hundred thousand dollars. And every, three of the Budget Committees said, we want those tech committees, those tech people back. It has hurt especially our elementary level because we really needed that. That cost a hundred thousand dollars. Another thing that was brought up was that the funds that were going to be used were, were going to be used were textbook funds. That's something that has been cut for the last, I know, three or four years. We need those textbook funds. One of the things that was discussed with another board member, and she's probably going to bring these up, she is, was just recently in Washington. Technology, that's the thing of the, the future. And she had a wonderful idea. I may be still in your thunder, Cindy, but I'm going to bring it up. You know, right now, you know, book, textbooks can be online. We're not, you know, the hard copy books are a thing kind of the past. But now you can get the little notepads. They're, they've dropped tremendously, you know, for seventy-nine dollars. You know, we may be able to look to buy, instead of the hardback books, maybe being able to buy that. But here, if you're wanting to take textbook money, this may be something we can't do. I'm, I'm getting off subject. I'm going to get back on track, Lynn. But that's another thing that's real concern. But really, I feel that this should have gone to the Budget Committee because we've got three pages of things people wanted to do that fifty-seven thousand dollars could do. I know that this is the melting pot. As Mr. Schu had mentioned, we are. I realize that. But if somebody comes to my home, which America is my home, and English is our language, I expect if they come to my home, I expect them to speak my language. And I, you know, I really do. And, you know, if you're going to immerse someone in something, I think that you should immerge them in English. And I think they learn more with that. And as Ms. Minnet mentioned, I think that we were providing a crutch. And I think if we really want to do something, why don't we do it before school or after school and do it as a volunteer program and put these children through that and not take away from their regular day? Why don't we put something in place? Because during that regular day, sometimes these children are already put behind an eight ball. I know sometimes talking to these teachers, they say these Hispanic children sometime are already struggling, and the teachers are already struggling. And, you know, they need the regular reading, writing, and arithmetic. And you're going to take some of their day already away to do this program. So maybe get a volunteer group before school or after school if you're wanting to do something like this. And volunteers, they do services free, and we wouldn't have to take these dollars to start with. And again, I don't want anybody touching any more of my, my, my funds for textbooks or supplies because one thing I saw, and I've been sitting in this, everybody wants to touch the supply budgets, and we don't have any more supply budgets to, to, to touch. And in, in essence, I'm going to shut up. I don't want, but I'm just saying, we need to say no. And we've got a lot of people out in our audience. I know many didn't get to speak, just to raise a hands of the people that are out there. I'd just like to say, who's opposed to the splash program? If you just raise your hand, because I know everybody didn't get to speak. Thank you. And I'll shut up.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Excellent presentation. Mr. Kligger, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be brief as Ms. Minnet touched on a couple of things that I had thought about. It's interesting sometimes when you find that you, after thinking and reading and not speaking to somebody, that you have a lot of the same points and questions. So I find that interesting to me. But, and thank you too, Jason, for all your hard work and what you do and for honestly being willing to have a big vision, you know? Sometimes when you have a vision, you have to take a lot of arrows. And that's just, that's just part of it. I've thought a lot about the program, and we certainly have heard from, from quite a few people and some here tonight. I certainly do understand that in days gone by, that one was truly considered educated if they were fluent in a language that was other than their native tongue. And I understand that. I think it's a tremendous benefit to have. I still think that's part of truly being educated. And so I understand the academic side of what you're proposing and what, what, what may potentially be a program. But however, in my mind, there, there are some questions. And are we sure Spanish is the language we want to use for the program? With the global economy moving around us very rapidly, is German a better fit for potential engineers? Is Chinese a better fit for someone who potentially wants a career in manufacturing on a multinational-type basis? Is further right school? And how do we implement the additional teachers? And what does that do with the existing staff? And I think those are all things that, that we have to, to discuss. I'm willing to table the proposal for further study on these questions and others, such as, does the program fit with current budget needs versus wants? Is Ms. Carpenter? as, does the program fit with current budget needs versus wants, as Ms. Carpenter talked about? If, if it's an up or now, if it's an up or down vote strictly on what's on the table in front of us tonight, then I'm, I'm a no. But again, I'm, I'm willing to table it for further discussion if that pleases the board and, you know, depending on where, where we go from there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger, for your comments. Ms. Blackwelder.
Jason, I'm sorry. Last week, when I asked you about, you know, we've heard that President Obama's given waivers to states regarding the No Child Left Behind reauthorization. And I know that we have to look to programs to get our AYP numbers up and to address at-risk children so that we do better. And I know that's a true challenge for us. But I too am disappointed that this did not go through the Budget Committee. I didn't ask last week, because I'm a part of that committee, and I thought maybe I had just missed it somewhere since I was not able to make a couple of the meetings. But with it not going through the Budget Committee, we don't get a good picture of what everybody has thought about that, especially at our administration level. It bothers me that this looks like an expansion program, and we haven't been able to do anything expansion-wise in many, many years. So for future, I would really like all of our programs, that's why we put the process in place, to go through the Budget Committee. Then we get a real good idea when it comes to the board that it's a true recommendation. I know that y'all are looking at some of the other programs to address AYP, and I think that would be wisely used for a subcommittee of some sort, administration, staff, maybe some board members.
Yeah.
I know it's getting tougher each year to meet those numbers and for schools to progress like you have to under No Child Left Behind, or we'll lose additional federal funding. And we understand the majority of that. But it is very concerning to me that a process that we put in place kind of got detoured. And I really would like to make sure that from now on, any of these processes do go through the Budget Committee. So unfortunately, because this appears to be an expansion program, and we have not been able to expand anything, and I asked about textbooks last week, and we know where we're going with core curriculum on that, we do not have any, any room to hit textbook monies. So I'm also a no tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwelder. Ms. Furtinbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to thank Jason publicly for the dialogue over the last day, that he has answered a multitude of questions for me and, and Dr. Shepherd, I will say, very professionally succinctly, and, and gave me the information straightforward, as I like to ask and receive it. So I appreciate that. I was not able to be here last week, as, as you all know, due to being in, in FRN in Washington, D.C. And, and just, Mr. Chair, point of order to Ms. Carpenter, wanted to note that I brought her back a full packet of materials from FRN. So it's okay if you mention my ideas ahead of time, Carolyn, but now you have all the, the federal legislation information as you go to serve on the State Legislative Committee. So I did watch the video, was able to rewind, hear all your comments multiple times, make sure I had them straight, and, and review the materials as well. I had the opportunity to, to actually look at the materials online in Board Docs, the beauty of Board Docs, last Monday while I was in Washington, and, and shared, and so I actually got some feedback from colleagues around the state about the program as well. Just a note, Mr. Schu, to, to your point, I'm actually a second-generation American. My grandfather was an immigrant, and he was very proud to be an American and very proud to speak only English in the business he started and held until his death, and my uncle still runs it. He only spoke English outside the home and spoke slow block in the home. And, and usually only to my grandmother to use words grandchildren weren't allowed to hear. So, so anyway, so I learned very early what it meant to be proud to be an American, not just the Lee Greenwood song. So I learned very early from my grandfather. As I've shared with you many different times, I, I work with people around the world every day. Today, I probably spoke to people on conference calls in, in no less than 10 countries, maybe upwards of 15 or 20. We speak English. We write in English, we speak English. We do greetings, goodbyes, happy birthdays, holidays. We learn their native language. Many of us have multiple signatures, you know, on our signature lines to be in, in Spanish, French, German, and English, the dominant languages. So, and as you know, I was in China with a legislative delegation in, in November, and Dr. Shepherd, I know you experienced that as well, staff. You speak English everywhere. There are very few people who don't speak English. So I think it's, it's important that we acknowledge, not that this is not a valuable program at some point in time, but it's not, as Ms. Blackwater said, it's not on the budget, it's not a priority, it's an expansion item. I don't think we've had expansion items on this board since I was in my third year, which was a long time ago. So one of the things I, I dialogued with Jason about, and I've mentioned this different times, is evaluate our current programs, pros and cons. And he said CNI is, is undertaking that currently. Evaluate those programs with the associated expenses. We keep adding. And one of the things we hear loud and clear, and we heard from teachers over the last week about this splash program, I don't think it was just about splash. It was about, you keep pushing from the education center out to the schools, and you don't know what our days are like. And I think that's why we had so many contacts about it from existing staff. And not just teachers, but other people at the schools, who said, you know, enough is enough. So review. In, in the strategic plan, we have an item for Dr. Probst for reviewing the software that technology has, and to reduce the titles, to reduce our overall expenses for software. We should be doing that with the programs in CNI as well. Review, keep what is good, enhance what is good, grow it, and, and remove. And one of the things I shared with Jason is, I can remember some years ago, when direct instruction came along, and it was a $50,000 program, just like this one was, in Grace, and a few of y'all probably remember that, who were on the board. It was just going to be this one program, buy some materials, couple of teachers were going to try it. Well, pretty soon it's across the county, we have lead teachers, we have extra training in the summer that we're paying stipends for, and mileage, and all these different things. And now it's probably a half-million-dollar program or more. And so, but that all just kind of kept growing and growing and growing. Does it meet the requirements? Maybe, but I don't know. We don't see any data on it. We just keep spending money. So we need, we need to stop on that. And I know I'm sounding like a Republican for y'all. I am fiscally responsible. I would suggest that we need to get more staff input to programs such as this. What I heard on, on the tape was that Mr. Little, the former principal at Fur Elementary, did an informal survey. We have the ability to do formal surveys. Why are we taking a word-of-mouth to say there's interest? I think if, if parents really understood, and one of the things that I learned about these immersion programs is, yes, students may be ahead by the time they get to third or fourth grade, but, and this was from someone from another county, if they are removed from the program after kindergarten, first or second, they are behind their peers, statistics show, because they are not getting their literacy all in English. And so if a family has to move after first grade, their student, are they going to be told that? Their student is going to be behind, and then that second-grade teacher is held responsible for bringing them up to grade level. They might be able to count to 10 in Spanish, might be able to read some words and say basic phrases, but they're behind in English literacy. So, I mean, that's from somebody who has had the program in another county, who I spoke with. So, as Ms. Blackwater said, in, in good times, it might be a nice option, but, you know, when you don't have the gains apparent, on, on our little agenda sheet, it says the funds were only from DSSF. But you also said, I think in the video that, or at the meeting, I should say, I watched the video, they were from textbook, right?
For the textbook supply material.
Okay. And I think the commitment was $25,000 a year for the 10 years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And Ms. Carpenter started my thunder there, but if we have extra textbook funds, one of the things we talked a lot about in D.C., and actually Senator Burr, on our visit to him, as a group from the North County delegation brought up, why aren't y'all using Kindles instead of textbooks? And with Kindles coming down in price now, or something similar, some similar device, I don't know what the ratio is for software licensing fees versus, you know, from a, a hard textbook to the software to do the downloads. But let's say, out of $25,000, if 12,500 went to license the downloads, and you had another 12,000, 12,500, that's 156 Kindles that you could buy. You could do, you know, a complete grade level or two, depending on which school you were doing it at, and let them have all the textbooks on a Kindle to do a pilot. If we have that extra money, and you could do that every year for 10 years. So we always use textbook money, and Ms. Clutz is not here, I don't see her, we always use it for reversion money, too. We don't know what we're going to get hit with from year to year. And lastly, with the disadvantaged student funds, if we have excess money in that area, I, I would say, let's use it to promote getting kids on grade level, improve the graduation rate, and dare say, we could even use it for TAs to help in the schools that are more at risk. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Furtinbaum, for your lengthy part there, but I appreciate it. It was well thought out and delivered well. Mr. Fur, your time.
Well, as usual, when you start at the opposite end, there's not a whole lot left to say. But as, as, yeah, the folks that were here last week or saw it online, I mean, it took, it took my rest, my board members, a week to, to get to what I said last week. No. I mean, it was that simple. It didn't take me but about 15 seconds to hear what you guys said, and, and I still stand by that. And, you know, I just, you know, they, they, I have to, you know, they do a lot of research, and they, and we do a good job up here, whether some of you folks believe it or not, but, you know, sometimes things are difficult. But to me, from the get-go, this wasn't very difficult. And, and the thing that, that has been brought up a few times is, it was mentioned last week that, you know, this program was talked about maybe a year or two ago, and we didn't have fu, didn't have funds. I mean, my gosh, what, what has changed? I mean, I don't really understand that, and we'll, we'll get to the bottom of that. But, and I, and like Ms. Furtinbaum said, to me, with the, there's a disconnect somewhere from here to the schools, and we, we just got to, to work on that and get it fixed. And I'm just a little disappointed, you know, I think as, just echoing some of the rest of the people's remarks, that this shouldn't even come here yet. I mean, it should have been at the Budget Committee level and, and talked about it on down the line when, when there were some funds available. But just like, you know, nothing's changed here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Fur. And for the rest of the board members, thank you all for all your research and all your time and effort put into this. And, you know, I'm not going to add much more to what they've already said already, because I don't want to be redundant. If you remember from being at the work session last week, the only, one of the concerns I had was the budget, and it was an unbudgeted item. And I, for one, don't like to see us take money from one budget to put into another budget, especially in critical times like we're in right now. And as Ms. Furtinbaum stated, we haven't had any expansion programs for years, and this really would be a new program, an expansion program. And I, I just can't, I, I for one can't see doing it myself. But then again, though, anyway, the motion reads for, asking for an approval of the immersion program as presented. Now, do I have such a motion for this, for this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion read that the splash immersion program be disapproved as presented at this time.
I would second that.
Well, I was thinking that if we didn't have a motion, it'd be a mute point. It would be no need to carry forward.
I felt we needed to vote on it, so I just wanted to make sure.
Do we, do we want to make a denial? So you're, you want to change the motion?
Yes, sir, I would like to, that we deny, yes, as Ms. Blackwater's satisfying.
Okay. All right, now, who's making the motion that we disapprove this?
And I second it.
All right, well, Ms. Blackwater makes the motion that we turn this down, and Ms. Carpenter makes the motion, seconds the motion. All those in favor of disapproving this motion?
No, that's fine. I just wanted you to re, I wanted to make sure I was following. Could you restate the motion?
I just, yes, that we deny.
Instead of be denied or disapproved is, instead, instead of.
I just was going to change the word as it was in there to make it simple, but if you want to say denied at present and presented, whatever, whatever's the place of the board.
All right, I have a motion, and I have a second, that the immersion program be denied as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed to that motion? All right, the motion is, is denied, and Ms. Monroe, you have record of that. It's 7-0. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move on to the next action item, and that's 9.2. And that is Mr. Lynn Wickie from Facilities and Maintenance is going to talk to us about the rental agreement for the Odell Elementary School athletic site. Mr. Wickie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In terms of all the things that you have to read, I've, I've added more to your pile, because what we added late this afternoon, and really for the benefit of you this evening, Mr. Chairman and board members, was the draft lease with comments back from the proposed or the anticipated tenant, the Clash. And the reason I put that before you is I just, I didn't want you to feel that, one, you didn't have it, but two, that nothing had transpired in the week or so that we'd been, excuse me, talking about this. I've had numerous conversations with Clash representatives, numerous emails back and forth. Our attorneys have been involved, they now have their attorneys involved. And to be honest with you, I spoke probably about quarter to five this afternoon with, with the Clash's attorney. And there's probably a half a dozen items, and I can run through them one by one, if you'd like, that, that remain to be finalized. But, and, and let me give you as an example, there was, I, I wanted to make sure that Dr. Williams and Harris Road were included, and, and so I touched base with him, as well as Mr. Calamari, to make sure that from the standpoint of our school, you know, were, were they satisfied with the hour changes and, and the things that were being proposed? They're fine with it. Were they satisfied with the idea of removing the fence of the softball field? And Dr. Williams explained to me that they're not playing games on the field, it's simply a practice field for them. So whether there's a fence or not is not an issue. Taking down the fence, as an example, allows the Clash then to use a larger amount of area for practice fields for their teams. So from the standpoint of athletics, and Harris Road, I think we're good with the changes that have been proposed by the Clash. We spoke about the, the time of use with Dr. Williams, and he's fine with that. He says, as long as, as long as I can get the kids out there after school up to about 6:00 P.M., I'm good. And after that, the Clash can use it as much as they need to. There was a concern that I voiced, and originally was struck out, there was a question about lighting. The Clash misunderstood what I said. I'm, I'm not concerned about the lights that are there being used. Obviously, they've been there for a long time. My concern was adding new lights, because somewhere along the conversation with Clash, there was a point made that they may want to add additional light fixtures, more, more light fixtures themselves. And all I said was that in selecting that fixture type, the owner, we wanted to be involved to make sure that it was the appropriate fixture to be added. And they, they were fine with that. So it's those kinds of conversations that we're having. And unless, and, and I addressed a couple of points that were asked by Mr. Kiger directly, and we've worked out that we will address those issues with language that, that I think meets everyone's needs. But I'd like to recommend to the board, in the essence, to save a little bit of time, but also to keep the process rolling. I think overall, I'd like to make sure that the board is satisfied that, that the lease in general is acceptable, but that we, when I say we, I'm speaking of the, the construction committee of the board, and myself, would, would get together and work with the Clash to finalize the language and proceed with getting, getting the lease in a final form for the board chair's signature. And so if, if that's acceptable, that is what I'm asking for this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wickie. Okay, board members, open discussion. If you have comments, questions, you know what Mr. Wickie's asking for. If you have open comments, we'd start with Mr. Furz, okay, Ms. Furtin? Okay, Ms. Furtinbaum.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, I didn't have the opportunity to be here last week to ask questions, but I'm just looking through this red line now, because it obviously came out late in the day. But one of the things I was very interested in seeing was the length of the term. And I was just doing a search for keywords, and I'm not finding things about, what if we want to sell the property? This is a five-year lease. I don't think we can tie this up for five years. Is anybody else concerned about that?
Yeah.
I don't think, I personally don't think we can. I don't think it's prudent for us. I, I think we need to, honestly, I would prefer if there was not this separate lease agreement, and it's just a, like, like the churches rent the auditoriums and so on. They can just have a facilities use, and it's on a, you know, maybe a six-month or a season or a year basis. And if we decide to sell, then they know that they can't use it that next year. This concerns me that we're doing this formal agreement, it's five years, that is a very expensive piece of property, and that area continues to grow. If, if DOT comes along and decides to actually widen, Odell School Road in 73, and I know that area very well, there are people who've bought corner properties there already on the other corners, with the potential of putting in the large gas station-type convenience store. store. If somebody would be interested in, in that frontage, and we had a very nice offer, I don't think we want to get stuck, caught in the lease that we have to buy out.
Well, Mr. Wiki, probably better to answer that than I am, but what I would think, just from my own, my own business point of view, and that would be that the lease would have to be bought out. It would have to be bought out, there's no doubt. But, looking at the positive point, though, if Clash, if this is worked out, and they do the improvements they're talking about, obviously, that would belong to the school system. So it would, the amount of the property would go up in equity, and, but the lease would have to be bought out, I'm sure. I feel certain of that part. But Mr. Wiki can answer to that, or Mr. Onrake, maybe.
Yeah, I think...
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I, go ahead.
I was wondering, one of our real estate attorneys, Phil Runkel, has been working on this lease, but I'm wondering if that's something that Phil and you have discussed is a transfer of property. Right. At the moment, it is a buyout situation under the lease, and there's, there's a couple of reasons or thoughts behind this. One is, in talking, well, with, with the local developer, as well as other people in the area, the interest financially in that area is really where the school is located, not where the fields are located. That's a secondary use at best in, in most developers' minds. The corner is what's of interest. We talked with Jonathan Marshall and Mike Downs about the expansion capabilities of the highway system in there, and what we were told is that it, it is on the, on the books, but not until far into the future, 20 to 25 years, as I recall, into the future. There are simply a lot of utility work and other things that would be required, and we're nowhere near that point in terms of making that, not us, but I mean, the county is, in making that investment into that infrastructure. So, the, the focus would be, you know, that the, that the corner properties of the school property will pull, will pull the most interest. And in talking with a particular developer, they said, one, we would either replace the fields if that was really necessary, if that was something the owner wanted, you know, the district wanted us to do that, we'd find a way of replacing those fields, or we'd make arrangements to, you know, develop the site in a way that that, the fields would be remaining in use as long as possible. I would agree with Chairman Schuh that the investment is something that we looked as an advantage. If, if we don't have a leasee that is willing to make that investment, and the only reason it's that long is because of the investment. If you normally look at a one-to-three-year lease, you're not going to get somebody to put in thousands of dollars into repairs and improvements of the fields that, that the Clash is looking at doing. And that's where the rub comes. You know, we would be the beneficiary of that investment. The trade-off is we make a long-term commitment to them. But there is the reality that a lease can be, can be bought out, and I think at that time, if you're negotiating a selling agreement with somebody, that can certainly be built, built into the, into the sale.
Okay, I would just, I guess, submit that if somebody is buying that property, if they're interested in buying that acreage from us, including the corner, the whole thing, not, you know, you're making an assumption in two parcels. I'm saying if we sell the whole thing. Those, any improvements on those fields are going to be negligent. I mean, it's not going to, they're not going to buy them because there's a concession stand or a dugout or, or whatever might be there, a new fencing, because they're going to get rid of it all anyways. So it, it has no value. We're only getting over $50 times 12, right? Monthly lease is $600. We've already spent more than that in attorney's fees on this. It's $3,000 for the length of five years. That, the improvements to the fields are going to be of negligible value to us to sell the property. I guess, I'm not sure why we've kind of gotten this far in it. There's a couple other things. It specifically says hours in here until 11:00 PM. I mean, I'm not sure what the noise requirements and light requirements are with UDO. Is 11, is 11 o'clock? I don't think we can say hours in here if we haven't checked, because wouldn't the UDO be in effect there for noise and lights?
I mean, it would be in effect for the City of Concord or the City of Kannapolis, but I'm not sure if they deem a timeframe. But, yeah, we probably do need to look at that.
Well, we, because we just went through that, with there's some soccer fields below my subdivision, and they have restrictions on early and late and whatnot, but we're City of Concord, so I don't know. But, so that, there's, to me, there's kind of disparate sections in here. What I was skimming through, why Harris Road is mentioned, it says no other fields, and then it says softball fields. Mark, it seems to be disconnected on the logic of it. It, to me, it's not clear. As I read from the beginning, it says only these fields, but then later it talks about softball fields. And lastly, at the bottom of the first page, red line, it starts talking about tenants shall use reasonable best efforts to allow other athletic and social organizations, including but not limited to Carolina Sport and Social, to use the fields when they are not reasonably needed by tenants. And I will tell you, from the soccer fields below my house, and the different organizations, rallies, and things that have occurred down there, and it's like not right below my house, but below my subdivision, I should say, it is not always things that you want to occur on your property. And we don't own the property as a subdivision, it's, somebody else owns it. But when they talk about allowing social organizations, there, there are, you know, I'll say just groups who do not clean up after themselves, almost, you know, make it a party all night kind of situation. So I'm just speaking from personal experience on what happens two rows of houses over from where I live. So I don't, I don't like that phrasing in there, that this is, ultimately, it's on school land. And so I think we're going to hear more about that.
Okay, if I could just defend the idea. The idea is to maintain those fields as fields for the county of Cabarrus. As you probably know, there are extremely limited numbers of fields for any of these activities to take place in the county. These lands are val, these fields are valued for the ability of people in the community to use them. That's why I, I think, could I, could I cut a deal where I could, could make that part of it? Yes, ma'am, without a doubt. That corner will at some point be very valuable. It has its value today, but it'd be more valuable in a few more years. For, for a developer that wants the corner that we sit on, I can make him replace those fields, I can make him keep those fields. That's not an issue. The, the people that I've talked to have said, we don't care, whatever you want to do with them. We want the corner. And that's what you're going to sell, is the corner of 73 and Old Odell. Those, those acres on which the buildings sit is what is valuable, not anything else. And I think that what we, when I've talked with the county, the hope is, is that the fields, whether they're there or replaced elsewhere, will be there to serve the people of the community. So, you know, that, that's the importance of the deal. The wording, as I said, the reason Carolina Sport and Social was in there is that they were the folks who came simultaneously, if you recall, they put in a, a bid, if you will, or proposal to use these fields as well. So we're the ones who insisted on them being at least part of the mix, is because they made an earnest effort to be there and, and showed interest initially. So their thought is, or rather, excuse me, the Clash's thought is that they are responsible, under the lease, for what goes on in the fields, the damage, repairs, cleanup, whatever is theirs to worry about. And, you know, they're, they're a youth organization. They, they definitely want to protect their membership, their children as well. So I think that you'll find that, at least, certainly the earnest hope is that they're going to maintain things in a way that is friendly, user-friendly, and neighborhood-friendly, not only for the neighborhood, but for their own participants.
Okay, Ms. Furtenbaugh, you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Blackwelder?
Okay, well, Ms. Furtenbaugh did have some points there. I think between the Construction Committee and Lynn, we've looked at this and reworded and worked with the attorneys. But my thought in the tenant shall be use reasonable best efforts to, this, to me, still speaks to like the AAU teams that we have, that have the ability to use fields in the county. But we still have first priority as Harris Road Middle School, so that does not change.
No.
And they are not allowed to sublet any part of this agreement on their own. It still has to go through us and, and get our blessing as well, correct?
Yes.
That's not changed. Correct?
There's, there's, that's a point of discussion with them. I will be honest, they, they would like to have the ability to sublet as...
But are they doing it to, to actually have revenues for it, or just because they're wanting some ideas of who's going to be playing when, or will they actually gain a monetary benefit from that?
There is the possibility that they could gain a monetary benefit from it. What I was told by their attorney was that they're looking to sort of fill in the gaps, when, when the fields are not in use by anyone, that they would fill those gaps with people who do want to use them. But it was sort of hit me.
I would have a little issue with that myself, Lynn. My thought is, it's still our property, it still should go through our facilities use, you know, the same priorities that we use, that the schools have first priority, and that we're the ones who say who can use the fields and when, because I think we would give up some, you know, power there of who's out there and what's going on. You know, I'm not sure that the UDO or the noise ordinances would not be abided by at that point in time, because it would have to be, and there's no doubt. But at the same time, if we're definitely losing control of who's out there playing, when, doing what, I don't know how we would police that like we do on our other fields. I definitely agree with this being a community use, you know, with the fields, and that's a huge benefit for the county since we are lacking so in, in ball fields. And that's a huge revenue source. It's, I know that's a huge benefit. But at the same time, if they have the ability to sublet, I'd have a problem with that. I would like that addressed with the, with Phil, and let him take a look at that.
No, that'd be fine.
The water. Hold on. Page four.
Yeah, the word they used was sporadic use, but...
Yeah, but I don't, I'm, my thought is, they don't control when they're not using the fields. We should maintain that control and that power. It should still go through us, just like any other fields do. And as far as item number seven, I know we were talking to them about the water service, and that's red noted there. Can you give me an idea of what, why the verbiage was changed?
Well, it's changed initially, we did talk about them putting in a full sewer, a full new, new water service. We've been looking at an alternative, we being Facilities Management. We've looked at, and our plumbers believe that we have the ability to tie, to tap a line in off of our own main coming in off the street, where we've had problems with the water mains have been closer to the buildings and in the buildings themselves. So we believe that the pipe coming in from the street to the meter, and from the meter in, is probably good to the point of where the concession stands are located. So the thought is that we can tap a line, you know, put a valve and tap a line, get them the water service they need running off the meter that's at the street, and not have to require them to put in a new water service. They're the only ones that are going to be using the water, so the meter will be recording that, and it will be a lot cheaper for them. So, and I've simply said that whatever that cost is for us to make, to make that connection would be their cost to cover, and they didn't have a problem with that.
Okay, and that last line actually reflects that. Tenant is responsible for the cost of the water and power use by, that makes sense. You know, I agree with this, I'm definitely supportive of it, but I have an issue that we are giving up any type of control over scheduling of these fields, and especially if they're making profit on it. As Ms. Furtenbaugh pointed out, we're not making a lot of money off of this, and for them to be able to use our fields when we might be able to rent it to somebody else and us gain that benefit, I definitely would like to have that part revisited.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Blackwelder. Mr. Keiger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have a couple of comments today that, that the attorney has then answered that and several more, and I think he, he had several marked as, I think, business decision, which just basically means it's, you know, we just need to decide what we want to do. And I, I think your recommendation is to try to save everybody from having to hear all of this all the time, and that, that may be, they may want to hear it, they may not. I, you know, I'll leave that up, up to them. But Ms. Blackwelder hit on, on the water, which was one of my comments, and the changes is one of my, was one of my comments as well. But as far as the lease goes, I think what we had kind of talked about is, in, in the current marketplace, with some unknowns with DOT, and some unknowns with water and sewer as far as a development goes, five years didn't really seem like that long a time to let them use it, knowing that we may have to buy out the lease. Is that a calculated risk? Yeah, it is, but I don't think it's, it's overly burdensome for the, for the school system. So, I mean, that's kind of where we came from on that particular point. So, that's, you know, I, I think we, I'm, I'm ready to move forward to try to turn the nuts and bolts and let the, the attorneys, you know, this was all great until the attorneys got involved, sorry, Mark. But, you know, I think we're at the point, we can kind of tighten that, tighten it down, but I'm, you know, I'm, I'm willing to do it with you and Ms. Blackwelder, but if everybody else wants to stay in the thick of it, that's fine with me, too.
That's fine. Okay, Ms. Blackwelder wants to make a point of clarification before we move on.
Well, as we read, actually, as Furtenbaugh pointed out, number 10 actually addresses the subletting and says they can't do it without the landlords. So this, to me, says one thing.
It says they cannot assign the lease, but they remove the sublet language.
Right, that was the point. They're trying to propose a change to say they are allowed to sublet, and I think that's one of the things that, what I'm hearing is, that change is not accepted.
And Mr. Runkel has a comment on that in his, in his reply to, so that's something he's still working on, I guess.
Right.
But I do remember specifically seeing that in his comment.
So it still reflects that.
If my memory's, I'm...
No, no, I was just going to say, you have to remember, what we're looking at are two, two, there's our lease, which we proposed as a draft, and then the rebuttal from, from the Clash. Neither is, is approved by either side yet. So we're still, it's still in the works, and that's what I said, that's why it needs further development and additional work before it becomes finalized. The only question is, are you comfortable with allowing the Construction Committee and myself to work that out with the attorneys and the Clash, or do you want us to bring it back? The, I, I only ask that question because the Clash is saying, you know, they're, matter of fact, they're holding trials this week at another field because they couldn't get in in the Odell, and they're really anxious to use the fields, and they would like to do that with the lease in place. That's the only question.
I think that, can you just maybe emphasize that point one more time? This is their rebuttal. This is not our lease that we're looking at.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. This is not cast in stone at all. It's just simply what they, they looked at our lease and said, you know, looking at it, we'd rather have it this way. That, that's what they've done here. That, that's, that's all. And we can obviously go back and say, you know what, that's nice, but we don't want to do it that way, so how do we find a middle ground?
Okay, let's move along, board members. Ms. Carpenter, you have some comments.
I'm going to be short and sweet. I, I kind of like what Holly, one of my major's concern is the lease part, not allowing them to get revenue where we could get it. So that's, that's really my major concern.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. You did so good. Ms. Monahan?
I understand how Tim feels. By the time you get down here, everything's been said. I have no objection to you continuing to work on it with, with your committee. You've heard the, the comments, and I think you, you know, know what would make them awfully angry if it didn't turn out that way, so I think it's fine.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. Yes, now, we want to move down to my left again, and I think Mr. Fur had a comment.
I just got a question for you. So, right now, in prior years, them fields that we're talking about letting them maybe sublease, what has been going on with them up to this point? So you got, you got an outfit that wants to come in and make it better, spend their money to use it and to improve it. And we haven't done anything with it, but now we're going to be, I got to be careful how I say words. So we're not, we're not happy because they're going to make a little money, maybe. You know what I'm saying? Yeah, I understand, but we haven't. We've had that opportunity for how long to, to be out there doing what they're going to do, and we chose not to do it now, and that they're going to fix it up, we won't take advantage of it. So I would, you know, you know what, you get where I'm going.
Uh huh.
But here's the deal, I think we should let, leave it up to you and the, and the lawyers or whatever, and let's, let's get it going.
Yeah, Mr. Schuh.
Ms. Furtenbaugh, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure, in the comment, or the section here that says the sharing, the expense of the water line, I believe you said in the last meeting that it would be about $10,000, which, which would mean our share would be $5,000. Is that correct or no?
No, I, I, just a minute ago, I said, it was 8,000 is what I said, but the, what we've determined is that there's a potential to just eliminate the whole idea of a new water line and top, tap off service for them off an existing water line. And they, they would be responsible, what I told the attorney was, as far as I was concerned, is they would be responsible for any of the costs associated with that. And he said, what did you think that would be? And I said, somewhere, you know, 1,000 to 2,000 in materials and labor. That, that's my estimate off the top of my head. And he said, if that's what we're talking about, we're fine.
Well, I, I guess I would like, if, if, if we have any ownership to it, I don't want it to be an unknown amount of money. I'd rather it, say, not to exceed $1,000 contribution or something.
We'll, we'll know that at the end of this week.
Okay.
I just have plumbers in the ground working at it. We'll know that very shortly.
Will, will this property be removed from the mowing contract, then?
The fields will, not the rest of the property.
Okay, so it'll be removed from the mowing contract. And then, is the, is, I did not find any... And then, is the, I did not find a term called buyout in here. Is there a buyout fee defined? Because we would, if the buyout fee is the right, that needs to be defined.
Yes, it does.
So that we are not paying for the cost of improvements if we need to buy it out. We're only paying any rent they paid in advance or whatever.
I think you're going to find a prorated piece of that.
Well, that's what, it needs to be defined, so we're not caught holding the bag because we need to use that property for something else in the future.
No, I, I understand, and we can do that.
And keep in mind, there's one newer building facing the fields where the PLC was. If we need to call that building into service, that means we need the parking lot. So, we need to have that, some kind of a clause in there that we, if we need to call that newer building into service again.
That's true. No, that, that's the point, there would, there would be no conflict of times, is all.
Okay, board members, that was a very good discussion. Are there any other comments? Mr. Carpenter, you have a comment?
One question, and Tim had mentioned, my understanding is, now, those fields were being used by Park and, Odell Park and Recreation, were they not?
They were.
So, they, Tim, they weren't just sitting there not being used at all. So, you made a comment about that. So, so Park and Recreation were using those fields up until...
I'm not sure how much, but they...
But, they were, because they were using games, so we were using, utilizing those fields. They weren't sitting there just idle.
Okay, Ms. Black.
Lynn, we have a construction committee meeting on Friday. Will this be part of our construction committee discussion?
Yes.
So that we can revisit the, all the issues that the board members have had?
Mm-hmm.
And you'll be ready as far as fields responses from some of the things that we've brought out tonight?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, board members, are we finally clear? Everybody heart clear? Good. I wanted to speak mine just for a couple of minutes here, and that is, one thing that I don't want to see at the Odell site is what happened at the Bethel site. You know, the vandalism, the, all of the, don't give anybody any ideas or anything, you know, but what they did down at Bethel. And it would cost us 10 times what the lease is from clash to go put a fence up, put security systems up, and probably even have somebody to monitor that place 24/7 to keep vandalism from occurring. So, I'm thankful that we've got somebody interested in this, and if we can work out the details. The $50 a month lease is extremely insignificant amount, and obviously, if we do get an offer on the property of substantial value, we'd have to obviously buy the lease. But, you're talking less than $3,000 on the lease, that would be pretty obvious. But, the part that would not be obvious is the improvements, and as Ms. Furtinbaugh had mentioned, and Ms. Blackwelder, that would have to be defined in the lease agreement on a depreciation, amortization schedule, so we would know where we are at the end of year one, two, three, four, that type thing, and a decreasing depreciation there of the amount spent on the improvements. And other than that, I, I see no problem in the construction committee working along with you, and when, and the attorneys, and when it gets right, then present it to me for the signature as the board chair, and move forward with the lease. So, with that being said, do I have a motion from the board that we go ahead and approve the rental agreement, and give the construction committee the authority to make the changes that need to be done, and bring it to me as the board chair?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to suggest that the motion be, not that we approve any agreement, because the agreement's not finalized, but rather that we authorize the construction committee, which is Ms. Blackwelder and Mr. Kiger, authorize them to finalize, noting all the board concerns. I don't want to say we're approving it tonight, but we authorize them to finalize it.
To work with Mr. Whitkey and the attorney.
Right. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the Board of Education, Construction Committee, and Mr. Whitkey, along with our attorney, to finalize the clash rental agreement for Odell Elementary School athletic fields, including comments made by the board tonight.
Okay, I have a motion for that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Somebody's got to do it, really.
All right. Now, you, you heard the motion. All those in favor, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting this motion, say aye. Aye? Are there any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Mr. Whitkey, you got your marching orders, so you're good to go with getting that worked out with Mr. Kiger and Ms. Blackwelder. Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitkey. You're going to stay at the podium, because you're going to be talking to us about the Eurotech as a preferred vendor for the Northwest Cabarrus High School, so you can continue with that if you will.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Whitkey, before you get started, they beeping me back there to do a cassette change, can you pause for just about 15 seconds? Thank you. Okay, we're back on. Mr. Whitkey, floor's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, Northwest High School stadium bleachers have suffered over the years and deteriorated, to the point where we were considering complete replacement or doing something rather substantial in the repairs of those bleachers. We were successful in sort of making a Band-Aid solution to get them past, or through the last season of football this last year, but now we're faced with what to do next. And I will say that we've looked at a lot of different scenarios. One was to just try and continue the patching, but that didn't seem to be a solution because of the amount of groundwater that's under, going underneath the stadium, and literally washing away the, the earth from supporting the concrete structure. So, that, that's probably not the most sensible thing to recommend at this point. Another opportunity or alternative would be to literally punch holes through the concrete that's there, go down to stable soil, put in new, a new structural frame of steel, and similar to what you've seen at the new, new stadiums like Cox Mill High School, create a substructure to support a new set of seats, aluminum seats. I can tell you that we're not funded to do that. The seats alone would be between $100,000 and $125,000 based on a recent, fairly recent estimate we got from someone. And the steelwork I'm suggesting would be close to that at least. We have approximately 90, I'd say $95,000 remaining in the, in the project after we spent the cost for repair of the concrete last fall. So, we looked at options, and one of the options that was presented to us was, was the product called Eurotech, and actually, that's the name of a company. The product itself is manufactured by Bayer, whenever you pick up, I don't, I don't think it's the same folks that make Esperon, but it, it may well be a division, yes, of Bayer. And it's their polyurethane foam grout. And I've, you know, both, well, Mr. Kiger and, and, this is, Blackwelder and I have, have been present and looked at some of the materials that these folks have. They had a short presentation they made to us and to the staff at the school, and it was a pretty impressive product, literature and photos. One of the things that I liked most about this product is that as they, what they'll do is they'll drill holes periodically in the existing concrete deck and put the foam in. It, it literally hardens, I believe it comes up to, close to full strength in about an hour. It hardens even, even faster than that, but full strength, very short order. And where, where concrete, really, full strength is 28 days on concrete, so you can see the comparison. And the strength, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Holly and Blake, but I believe he said the strength was 100 times stronger than concrete, once in place. And it's, it's a pretty remarkable product if it can do that. And literally, it fills the voids. Whatever is open is filled, reinforces what's laying on top of it, the concrete bleachers, and fills anything below that. That, what they're proposing is to use their product to do that throughout the home field side of the bleachers, and the cost of that would be $52,000. The second number that was in the proposal, and I think that was $160-some thousand dollars, that included another process that would have required them to drill holes and, and put in a drainage system underneath the stadium seating. After talking at length with, with their representatives, they said the more they thought about the process, and some of the projects they've, they've done in the past, they couldn't honestly recommend that. One, because of the cost, it's substantial. And two, they said, what we've done in the past, and they gave me a couple of references, I'm checking one of them now, where they've done is, they've come back in every year or two and done a check on the condition of what they've not only installed, but other areas around it. And occasionally, they have filled an avoid here and there to just make sure that the integrity of the system is, is in place. And they said, honestly, if you looked at a $5,000 cost for us to come back every couple of years and do this for you, it, it would probably be good insurance, not that we'd necessarily spend that money, but that would be, what they envisioned was the maximum amount to do the repair or reinforcement, but that would eliminate further deterioration of the soil. They said if you also would address the water coming down the hill and take that off before it gets to the stadium, that would greatly reduce the opportunity for further erosion. So, if we spend the $52,000, that leaves us, and my math's not real good today, but I'm going to say about $43,000 remaining to address the stormwater problems, and also, we have to address ADA seating areas in, in the stadium. And I feel that, I've, I've talked with our people, we think that we can develop, whether it be an open swale type, which is there now but not working, or an actual pipe system, we think that we can pretty much stay within budget, do the, do the drainage removal and this new repair, if you will, and reinforcement of the existing system within the existing budget of the project. So, our recommendation, and I know it's unusual because I'm one of the last people to recommend a single source if I can avoid it, but this is a unique product, and I'm not sure that there aren't other products around the world that would compete with it. But, I think, you know, I, the, I'm not sure if I shared the example, they've done this, a very similar project at North Carolina State University on their stadium, and it was done in 2008, 2009. So, it's been in place a few years, and I've got a call into that, that facilities person, but according to the vendor, it's, it's been extremely successful, and I have no reason to doubt that. But, we will verify it. And I, I think with that sort of recommendation, I believe that it's, it's a reasonable thing to try. I've, there are a lot of, you've heard of mudjacking where you, when you have a concrete slab that's not, not staying where it's supposed to. Mudjacking has been used for years, but typically, it's been done with high-strength concrete, and it's been very expensive and doesn't always work at all, because it tends to filter, you know, if, if you have a lot of voids, it'll follow the voids and not fill them completely. This is guaranteed to fill the voids. And I think that's, that's the nice thing about this product. There, there's a little bit of safety in that, because it seeks out and fills every available space. And so, I think, I'd like to recommend that we try this. It will allow us, it, it does mean that you will be sitting on concrete, it won't, you won't have aluminum seating in the future, it'll be like other, other stadiums we have. But, it certainly will be, I think, a very good way of repairing what we have, of ensuring that, you know, the future is bright for that stadium, and that we do address the groundwater, you know, the, the stormwater that's coming down that hill. We do have to attack that problem, so.
Thank you, Mr. Whitkey, for that excellent presentation on the R-Tech. And now, I'd like to ask the board members, starting with Ms. Minnet, if you have comments, questions, concerns.
This sounds a little bit like the foam insulation that goes into a home.
Yes.
And it does. I can testify, I just had my house redone, and it really does go in every nook and cranny. I'm, I'm fine with this as long as you substantiate what they said about the NC State project. I think if they're saying that it was successful then, I, I see no reason not to go this way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minnet. Ms. Carpenter.
Ditto to Ms. Minnet. Is this, is this the only one that they said job they had had then?
No, they've actually done a lot of work for the DOT, but they were saying similar projects, and they said that the North Carolina State was the most similar project that they had to share with us. But, I was going to talk with the NC DOT folks to...
Yeah, I would, I would, I would just double-check that, and I have no problem with that, as, as long as we get some verification on it. That's fine with me.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Kiger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At one point, I did want to make, and you did an excellent job of laying all that out, but all of the holes that are drilled do get filled, so they're filled with grout and sealed. So, I mean, you, you, they'll be visible, they're like 5/8ths of an inch, they're not very big. They're small, but you, you'll, you'll see the caps, I mean, not even a cap, it'll be flush, but it'll be filled, the, the void is filled. But, that's, you know, I, I guess we've, we've talked about this quite a bit, and I told you the other day, hurry, get a pen, you know, let's get going. But, anyway, that, I, I'll say for the record, it's my favorite stadium. I love the little horseshoe on the end and the trees on the other end. So, I'm, I'm hopeful that this is a good solution that will take care of, you know, we did a, a small Band-Aid, like you said, last year. This is certainly a lot better than a Band-Aid for, for that, and I think the cure time, like you said, is an hour. So, we're, we, you know, once they're there and get it done, we're in good shape. This is the first time that I remember us talking about ADA out there. I don't remember that coming up before, so we may have to just talk about that at a different, at a different time, but...
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Blackwelder.
Well, I agree as well. This is a good permanent fix. I'm glad we did the Band-Aid last year. This allows us the actual funds to do this permanent fix, and at such a good price. That was a huge issue for us, knowing that this was such a big problem, that this was really going to cost us. So, to keep it within budget and have a permanent fix out there that really works is a good opportunity.
Okay, Ms. Furtinbaugh.
I just have a question about, when you're talking about the drainage, and there is tremendous water runoff from that hill above, because it's coming down from the high school, too.
Yes.
Can that water be captured at all for greenhouse or field usage? I don't know.
I, I think, that, that's a good question. We, we do a lot of that in other places, and hopefully, I'm not...
I think there is actually a pond or something down at the lower end.
Right, right. I'm not sure what, what is done with the water that's in the pond. I know, you know, we certainly collected it in tanks before for irrigation purposes, so I'll, I'll have to check with John Owenby a little bit more and find out, because we may be taking the water out of the pond, as an example. But, normally, we like to keep it in tanks, keep it filtered and clean, so it doesn't mess up the piping as it goes out. But, e- either way, to put it in tanks, that's not that expensive. Pumping it can be expensive, but I need to find out a little bit more about the system, but it's a very good point. We, we should look at that.
And the other question, I haven't been in the stadium, I didn't go up for a game this year, but the, the railing on the steps, was it replaced last year? Because the railing was coming apart from the concrete as it was crumbling?
No, that was repaired.
It was just repaired?
Yes.
So, it's stable now?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's all, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Furtinbaugh. Mr. Fur. Okay, so like, everybody sounds like they're pretty much in favor, so I don't have any comments. All I can really basically say is, these people that's doing this, that they got to move pretty quick if it sets in an hour. That's a big stadium. And, and hope they're not standing in one place too long. Because I think they might get stuck. Okay, board members, we looking for a motion that Eurotech be approved as a preferred vendor and sole source for the repair materials to be used in stabilizing the bleachers at the Northwest Cabarrus High School stadium. Do I have that motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Monroe, if you make record, motion carries. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for us to convene in closed...
There's actually two motions there.
Uh, wait a minute, where's the other one at?
One is a sole source, and then the other's the $52,000 bid. They're all in the same line.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, we got it. Have a motion from Ms. Blackwelder, do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, Ms. Monroe. So, we approve them as a sole source, and we approve the money. So, you're good to go on that part.
Thank you very much, Ms. Monroe.
Now, we'll start with the time to move into closed session. And so, board members, I'll need to read this real quickly, and then we'll go into closed session, and that is pursuant to General Statute 143 dot 318 dot 11A 6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions, and appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee, and pursuant to General Statute 143 point 318 point 11A 3 to consult with an attorney employed by retained, employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged and to discuss as we need to. So, do I have a motion that we convene in closed session?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're convening in closed session, and for the listening audience and the viewing audience, that concludes our meeting tonight. Thank you for attending, and we'll see you in March. Good night.
Mr. Green, thank you for being with us tonight. I appreciate you being here. Good night.